Let's get the show on the road here. We've got one minute. You look like an interesting bunch. Okay, good evening. I'm going to call to order the Powhatan Planning Commission meeting December 7th. In addition to participating in person, members of the public may participate remotely by electronic means by joining a webinar via Zoom. During the public comment period, participants joining on Zoom may raise their hand using the Zoom controls on the computer screen, or if dialing in by pressing star nine on a phone. So first tonight, the invocation led by Mr. Hall, our vice chair.
All right, let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage a meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and fill us with your grace, Lord God, as we make decisions that might affect the people that are in attendance and those residents of Powhatan County. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. And on Pearl Harbor Day, I'd like to personally thank all our service members and veterans in Powhatan for the great service that they've given to our country, state, and community. Okay, regarding the agenda tonight, are there any requests to postpone action or amend the agenda? Then all in favor of the agenda? Aye.
Aye.
Great. Okay, administrative items, the minutes for October 5th, November 3rd, those regular meetings, we'll do those in the January meeting. So they will be in your packet for January, if you would please read those. Okay, now it's time to move on to the public comment period. The general public comment period is now open. If you'd like to comment on planning-related matters that are not scheduled for a public hearing later in the meeting, you may comment now. They're limited to three minutes. And of course, those at home may participate electronically. Please, please state your name and address when you come to the podium. Do we have any one this evening? Anyone at home?
I don't see anybody raising their hand.
Okay, well, since I will close public comments, since there is no one, we do not have any old business tonight, so we'll move right to our public hearings this evening. Okay, our first case is case 21-11, a rezoning Maple Grove at Fine Creek. Mr. Hopkins, do you have an overview of that for us tonight?
Sure, this is a very simple proffer amendment back in 2006 when Maple Grove was originally rezoned. There was a proffer, they had to make a stub road out to the east for the gray walls, future gray walls development that is existing. That is private roads. That stub road will never connect to gray walls. And in fact, BDOT itself prefers that it not be built out that way in large part. See the overview here, talk about the bottom right corner, just here, and I'm going to zoom in on the next slide. You can see in the contours, there's actually quite a hill there, a little bit of it. And that's one of the reasons why BDOT is not preferring to have it built out that way. It'd be quite hard to maintain a stub road that is not going to go anywhere. And so the developer is asking for an elimination of that proffer, simply to create a cul-de-sac as they have designed there, which is similar to what is the other roads. The connection points already in plan meet the BDOT requirements for connectivity, so this would not be relied on for that. It is really just kind of a vestige of an old case that would cost everybody money. I'll take questions.
Okay, well, is there an applicant here tonight that has anything they need to say? Okay, and then we let, well, let's check on any public comment. Anyone in the audience would like a public comment this evening? Anyone on Zoom? Okay, well, I will close the public comment period, and then we'll go on into discussion and questions regarding this rezoning. Dr. Brown?
I have no questions. It seemed really straightforward and appropriate, given that it's not going to serve a purpose.
Okay, in full agreement.
Same thing here.
Me too. Well?
Motion to pass.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Second it, let's have a roll call vote.
Dr. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Pendergrass?
Yes.
Ms. Hurt?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Ms. Kingery?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, let's move on to our second. This is case 21-12 rezoning. And Ms. Hopkins, I guess you'll give us an overview.
Yes, so this is a county-initiated rezoning for the parcel you see here for a convenience center. There has been a need for another convenience center in the county that Public Works has been looking for. As part of this rezoning, though, we needed to rezone to something that would be able to have a convenience center, which the current lot at Sea zoning does not have, so we had to go to something else. And for economic development purposes, I2 was chosen to provide the best opportunities for the southern portion of that lot to be developed. Economic Development finds that oftentimes, they can attract people who might want to locate, but don't want to go through the process ahead of time to go through the rezoning, so we're just trying to rezone the land ahead of time. We were going to have to go through a CUP regardless if we were going to stay at this, so we're going to have to go through these meetings regardless to get the convenience center. This is just a rezoning to kind of make a overall benefit for both economic development and the creation of this convenience center. Here's a kind of a loose overview of what the plan would be. It does not have to be two separate lots on the southern side of it. The county is planning to build out, simply to get the convenience center and hope that whoever comes in to build out the section of the southern part to do the road. So we're really only going to use the top half for our purposes, not do any more expenses than what is necessary, and hope that the rest of the road gets built out by whoever occupies it. It's also intended not to connect to 60, so really it is much of a Carter-Gallagher type of development than it is a 60-type of development. I know that would hopefully some concerns as to any of these projects that go on there as it is 60-adjacent, but really is no intent to have connectivity to 60. One of the issues that came up in going through this was an opinion from the attorney that we probably could not proffer during this case, in that if the county can basically do what it wanted, disregard its own regulations, I guess is kind of one way to put it, they have the power to do what they want, that if we were to proffer things, and then we would not really have to abide by them, then how could they possibly transfer to the next owner? And so the concern was, well, if we proffer these, the undesirable things in I2, then maybe they wouldn't attach to the next owner. And so the recommendation was made to make them deed restrictions, and that is the recommendation of this report. So these were the uses that were pulled out of I2 as potentially problematic for that lot, and those are ones recommended to be deed restricted. Hopefully, I summarized the legal part of that, if you have questions, the county attorneys here.
Yeah, Frank, if I could just clarify, the county attorney's position is deed restrictions are a less traditional way to go about this. And so while hypothetically, it could be fine, there are all kinds of landmines in that option, so it is not what we are recommending. The county attorney office's recommendation is to simply let this be rezoned once a new buyer comes along and is ready for that rezoning.
Anything else, Mr. Hopkins?
No.
I guess since we're the applicant, there's not an applicant here tonight to present, but I do feel we have to open it for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this?
Good evening. David Anderson, 2366 Bell Crest Circle. After reviewing the information in tonight's packet about the convenience center, I've got general observation and a request for the commission. First, my observation, the information provided by the applicant appears to me to be incomplete or rezoning case that's typically brought before this commission. Under the transportation section, I did not see a traffic study of any kind that would highlight any impacts on Route 60 or any secondary roads. Under the transportation section, I did not see a comprehensive transportation plan for the proposed three lots. In fact, the applicant did state that BDOT was likely to need to re-review the proposed roadway that was shown on a handwritten sketch. Looking at the environmental section of the application, I did not see an environmental study done or any mitigation efforts they may have resulted from that study. On the county's own website, it shows a stream and emergent wetland on the said property. So it's odd to me that we wouldn't have some type of environmental study done as we go to have a rezoning case. As the county attorney just mentioned, it seems odd to me about the request to do a deed restriction. I think the county attorney made it clear just then that he would not recommend it, even though the applicant was recommending it. It's also somewhat odd to me in a rezoning case that the county nor the applicant offered a single proffer. In the case that was just highlighted a minute ago over in Fine Creek, that particular case had 16 proffers. This has zero. Thus, I think my observation is that this seems odd to me, this particular rezoning request and how it's being handled. And here's my request for the commission. I'm not here to advocate for or against the rezoning. I'm here to advocate that you hold this applicant to the same standard and scrutiny that you hold every other applicant to. Every applicant, including this one, is entitled to a comprehensive, thorough, and objective review of their project. I look forward to your thoughtful deliberation. Thank you for your time and your service.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present this evening that would like to address this? How about on, anyone on Zoom calling?
Nope, no, it's clear.
Okay, well, I will close the public comment period. Let's start with discussions, and would you like to start off that end of the table?
I'll start it. It is weird. And I'm not for industrial right along the 60. The county, as far as putting a convenience center, and that can be worked wherever, depending on all the, you know, environmental studies and traffic studies and all that kind of stuff goes in. But at this point, I would say no to doing the entire piece of land as industrial. So I would leave the front part commercial, but that's me, because I don't understand why we're doing the whole piece industrial. I know people want, you know, the Carter-Gallagher thing, but that's along the 60, so that's not a, even though they say it won't be seen, it's not where it's supposed to be, so I'm going to say probably no.
Mr. Hall?
As far as the project, the commercial project there, what's the existing zoning in that already industrial too back in there?
Commercial.
Commercial.
Old commercial.
Well, the asphalt plant and concrete plant and everything that comes.
Those are industrial.
Okay. So I mean, it's to a certain degree ties in a little bit to what's there at the business park and what's over at Luckstone.
Dr. Brown?
I think we need, everybody needs to follow the same plan. And if we require applicants to do a full presentation, I think we need to require ourselves to do a full presentation. I would like to know, why is there not a thought of splitting it so that the back can be I2 and the front stays commercial? Was that ever suggested?
That's my knowledge. That was the area that Public Works.
Brent. You can add, yeah, hop in. Hop in.
Yep, Brett Sherdine, Assistant County Administrator. The primary reason for not wanting to rezone the front to commercial or keep it commercial, one, the existing general commercial district that is now has really no commercial uses. It's a dead transition district. We could rezonate to Commerce Center.
But isn't it going to Commerce Center anyway?
No, because it's vacant, so that the case that we'll be talking about, yeah, just for.
If it was vacant, okay.
But our thought was to really orient this portion of the property to the future Carter-Gallagher extension, have a significant buffer along 60, so you either wouldn't see it from 60 or would see very little and have it accessed from that Carter-Gallagher internally. If we went to Commerce Center, anybody that's kind of retail office, commercial-type stuff is going to want to have visibility on 60. And we've heard from a few users already, they're interested in commercial-type stuff that would want to have a direct access from 60, which we wanted to avoid. We would rather not have more entrances on 60 there and have it accessed internally, which would be more of an industrial, more of a South Creek-type development. So our thought, again, kind of envisioning whether it's light or heavy industrial there, we could work with either one of those, would be more of something akin to like a classic granite marble, which, you know, is also along 60, but has a significant buffer. Only unlike that, this would be oriented and accessed to Carter-Gallagher, not Route 60. So that's kind of the background of why we were thinking light industrial, not commercial on that frontage piece.
Can I ask a question? Why is it divided into two four-and-a-half acre lots? Why would we not just keep the parcel as one nine-acre lot?
Yeah, and initially, we said we would, we'd keep it as one. That was just showing how it could potentially be divided if we wanted to further subdivide it. But for now, we would, whatever we do, first develop, divide off and develop the convenience center, leave that as a single nine-acre piece. And then look at our options for marketing or developing that, but right now, that was just a potential option.
Can I ask a question? Just our other convenience center, does the county own that, or is that privately owned?
Let's count.
We own it. Can we fix those potholes? Just saying.
Yeah.
You haven't had a chance to chime in. Don't go anywhere, because they might have questions.
Chair, thank you.
Yes.
So I don't think classic granite is a big buffer, and if that's what we're thinking on this property for industrial, I don't think there's a big buffer there at all. I think that building stands out and screams, "Welcome to Hall Street or Broad Street." So I do disagree with your buffering, if that's what we're thinking, proposing for the buffer for this. On page 39 of the packet, I was a little bit confused, because it said 2020, that under the countywide future land use plan, the 2021 long-range comprehensive plan designates the subject property as industrial. Is that accurate? Because I thought it actually was gateway business under the new plan.
It is accurate. It is.
Because we still don't have.
I went to the website, and the only 2020 comp plan update that I could find showed it as gateway business.
And Jane, I'll jump in if you don't mind, but I agree with you, because that's what I was confused about as well. That if this was in the comp plan gateway business, because we haven't seen the update yet. I know staff shortages and so forth. It kind of concerned me that we had identified this as gateway, and all of a sudden, it's industrial, that.
Can we pull up the current version of the comp plan, which we haven't gotten a current version of it yet, so I would like to get a version of it? But.
And I understand.
Designated as gateway business, I don't know why we'd want to go against the brand-new comprehensive plan, turning this into industrial. The other question I have is, does this have to be rezoned for the county to put the transfer station there?
Yeah, so a few questions. One, it absolutely is in the current comp plan, industrial. We'll have to get you a current version of that. But being part of the, I think what you all recommended onto the board, I think, was gateway correctly, as you said, but then the board changed that to industrial later on. I remember that clearly.
We missed that.
Yeah, and then does, question, does the county have to rezone? I mean, the county doesn't have to follow our ordinances, so we could develop it with the current zoning and don't have to follow any of our own laws. You know, we thought, as much as we've worked to strengthen our ordinances and follow them, you know, we thought it was important for us to follow the process as well, so that's why we proposed to rezone, one, for the convenience center portion, just so that we would be having the correct zoning that we would require anybody else to have, and put the project through the scrutiny of a rezoning, because there might be aspects of it that, you know, we feel like we've fully vetted and engineered, but until we take it out to the public and have it all considered, you know, we thought that process hopefully makes the project better. For the remainder of it, certainly, it could remain general commercial. It's not viable for development like that. So our thought was, since the county controls the property and will have the ultimate say in what goes there, there was little harm in going ahead at the same time, and rezoning that to lighter-heavy industrial. And then the board will have to approve whatever goes there, whether it's a lease or sale. We'd still have zoning or not ultimate control of what it looks like, what goes there, what the terms are.
My thoughts are, I know that the government, for the benefit of the, yeah, the greater good, we don't have to go through zoning and whatever. I do think that we should try to hold ourselves to the same standards that we're very picky and demanding on other applicants. And so I, you know, we don't have a real good clear here. I would like to know the environmental impact of the convenience center going there before I would feel comfortable at saying yes to it. You know, that's just me personally, because we're very, you know, anybody come before us, and we're immediately like, you know, what did DEQ say and so forth? So I don't know how the expense of that or the timeframe, because, believe me, I go to the convenience center and we need another convenience center. I get the need that the public really needs that. I am concerned about these nine acres. Oh, I see, so that little gray piece is what.
That's very convenient that that one little piece of property all along 60 wound up being industrial and not gateway business. That's.
You see what I'm talking about?
Unusual, that seems odd to me.
Because all the purple's gateway business, right?
And I would think on 60, we want gateway business, and we would want a significant buffer that we wouldn't be able to see.
And I just.
If you're going to put industrial there, and then, you know, you picked out, you kind of handpicked these deed restrictions. What about asphalt and concrete plant? What about helicopter landing? How did you pick these and not other ones?
Yeah, we just went through and looked at some that we thought were especially onerous, some, but also probably wouldn't be viable there, so.
That's fine.
I feel exactly the same way.
If there's other ones that are concerns, though, we could certainly look at restricting others.
I just, do we have an explanation on why the Board of Supervisors took that little chunk there and made it I2? When we had, obviously, the gray part down where the, you know, the marble place is, that's done. We couldn't change that. But all that purple is gateway, so why is it critical, those little nine acres on 60? Is it because we owned it? Why do we think that no commercial business would go in there in those nine acres?
Because it would, the plan would be to orient it to Carter-Gallagher internally and buffer it significantly, so it wouldn't be, again, no, no commercial entities want, going to want to develop that if it can't be seen, and it's across from a convenience.
And I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm just trying to understand this. But based on access management, there's no development along there, so they could technically have an entrance onto 60 there. I mean.
Our plan would be to have no entrance on 60.
I know, I know. I'm saying if it stayed commercial and an applicant came along and said, "Hey, I want it for these nine acres for commercial," you know, let's say an office building or whatever, they are not violating any access management standards to have one entrance off that piece of property onto 60. And I mean, I'm just throwing that out there as my question, trying to understand the big push for why it own, that those nine acres can only have egress and ingress on Carter-Gallagher. I'm trying to understand why we're saying it has to be that way, because the convenience center is going to be using Carter-Gallagher, correct?
Yes.
So to me, that seems like a lot of traffic going on Carter-Gallagher to, because go to the convenience center. So if you have another industrial entity, it seems like that's a lot of traffic on that two-lane, you know, that road. I, you know.
Yeah.
Jump in where you feel comfortable. Personally, I think we need to do a little more background research.
I have, Madam Chair, I have another question.
Go ahead, Jane.
You implied that we would still control what goes there, but if that goes to industrial, there's buy right development that can go there, right? So are you implying that you're not going to sell it until you know what they're going to do with it? And at that point, you're going to control the design of it, the pattern book, anything that goes with that? Because the way that it stands now, we do control that.
Yeah, I think, I can't speak for the board, certainly, but I think before we were to entertain and offer the lease or sell, we would either want to have assurance through a site plan, something that would give assurance of how it's going to be built, what it's going to look like, or have significant deed restrictions that protect us sufficiently, so we.
Would that be transparent to the public? Would that be open to public comment? Would that be totally transparent to the community? Or could that be backdoor through the board and in agreement? And I don't mean that the wrong way, but I'm asking a very direct question.
Sure, yeah, I think the, maybe the county attorney could weigh in on, when the county disposes of property or sells property, there has to be a public hearing and a public process. I don't know if deed restrictions going with that sale or lease would be part of that. I would think we would want it to be totally transparent, but I don't want to misrepresent if the county could make it more private. But I would think at some point, in a negotiation, that can be closed session, could be behind closed doors, but before anything's approved, there'd be a public hearing, and that would be public information. Is that accurate?
Yeah, state law does require a public hearing on the transfer of the property, once that takes place.
I am concerned about these deed restrictions.
Can I get one?
Yeah, go ahead.
Chair, can I get one clarification? Before the deed transfers, that doesn't mean that we control what they are able to put there, because by right, if they buy it, they would still be, at that point, we couldn't change the zoning or require them to go through what they have to go through now to develop that property under general commercial. So it would be an open transaction, but there's still, we couldn't critique the zoning or critique what they're putting there at that point, other than public comment, correct?
Yeah, I mean, once the transfer takes place, they have the right to the full panoply of options under the zoning, unless there are restrictions in the rezoning as to what they can do. Or, and you know, I say this with lots of caveats, there's also the deed restriction idea, but again, while that's a plausible option that has been presented, we're not recommending that option. That's, that's, that's got.
I heard that clear. Thank you. Yeah.
Couldn't that be challenged in court, that we didn't live up to the deed restrictions in our part with the convenience center? So why are we forcing this owner to have to do that? Is that, would that be a viable argument?
It would be, yeah.
Okay, that's what I'm afraid of.
We would not violate the deed restrictions, though. Whatever we put in place, we would.
But I'm just saying, if they could challenge us in court, that we made them live up to stricter deed restrictions than what we did on that back piece of property.
Or any other.
Yeah.
Any other business coming in. It just, I'm sorry, Brent, it doesn't pass the smell test for me.
It doesn't for me either.
We're putting in special cases, because we're the county, we can do it, and yet we don't. Has to be a level playing field.
And I don't see. Again, we don't have to go through the rezoning. We can just do it. So our intent in doing this was to make it transparent and to have questions like these asked, and maybe some difficult questions asked. But I just want to be clear that our intent was not streamline it, make it easy for the county. Again, we don't need to be doing this. We wanted to put ourselves before this. So I just want to emphasize that that was, that was very conscious in that intent in doing so, so.
And I agree that the convenience center is needed, and we're not trying to halt the development of the convenience center. It's these nine acres on 60, and 60 is such a huge issue for the residents of Powhatan. And, you know, I'm going to send the Board of Supervisors an email and ask them, what was the rationale for that little triangle of I2 that we, that are there, like, what did we miss that led them to want to do that? Because it kind of makes me wonder, like, what did we miss? I'd like to understand, and I understand that it's industrial all back in there with Luckstone and everything, but, you know. Okay, any other questions or discussions? Anyone would like to add to the discussion? Any further questions, since we got the whole county staff here? We're a hot topic tonight. So, um, we, by how we vote on this, so we understand this clearly, this is not going to halt the development of the convenience center. It's just what those nine acres are zoned. Is that correct? Are we understanding that correctly?
I don't know our intent to, again, we don't have to have the zoning to develop a convenience center. We wanted to, so I can't say whether we would delay the project or whether we would go ahead and develop something that's not in accord with the zoning on the land. I, I think we have to go back and. I think we have to go back and.
Were there any other additional research, environmental impact studies or anything like that, that the county sees the need that that should be completed?
As part of our due diligence for this, I think it was a phase one environmental we had that revealed some, I remember there was some.
Did, did I miss that?
Nothing especially sensitive on the property that was found, any development that would happen. We're working on a detailed site plan right now. But any development that would happen would stay out of any streams, their buffers. It have all the, the usual review by DEQ for erosion, stormwater, all of that. So all of that would be developed and, and protected. But yeah, we're not aware of any especially sensitive natural resources on.
And I know that we're kind of short on GIS technology experts, you know, I'm not criticizing anything, but is, are these hand drawings fairly accurate of the location of the road and every, what we're looking at?
Generally so, yeah.
Generally so.
We, the Carter Gallagher on the west side, obviously, we know exactly where that is. So that's. Point. Then we have some right of way dedicated from Luckstone and Walmart on the eastern side. So that's my own point. How we bring them together, you know, there's a little bit of movement there in Leeway, but we've from some of our past smart scale applications to develop that Carter Gallagher extension, we have an idea of where that right of way would go. So this aligns generally with that. It's obviously not survey accurate, but it's fairly close to the alignment.
Any additional questions for staff tonight or further discussion needed? Okay. Thank you so much. Um, do I have a motion regarding this project tonight? Let me find my motion stuff. Anyone like to make a motion? Okay, I will make the motion. I recommend that we deny the rezoning of twenty-one dash twelve REZ District One Flat Rock sublet, tax map particle forty-two dash nine F from general commercial to heavy industrial two.
I second.
Okay, we need a roll call, please.
Dr. Brown.
Agree.
Agreed. Agree.
Disagree.
Agree.
Okay, so it's denied for one. Okay, thank you very much. All right, moving on to new business tonight. We have case twenty-one dash oh three, pattern book, Strickland Brothers Oil Change eighteen seventy Stonebridge Drive. And before we start in that, I have one quick question. I know that it was left out of our packet. Was this online for the public to see? Okay, good. Because legally, I don't wanna get in trouble attorney down there that we are talking about something that the public didn't have all the information for. Okay, great. Well, okay. So would you like to?
This is a pattern book for Strickland Brothers Oil Change over off Stonebridge. You can see the site here. It's a large parcel next to the Avalon Bank. They're going for a craftsman style look. It's got mainly grays and blues, fairly muted colors. That's in line with our pattern book. As far as the south elevation, that's what we'll be facing sixty, whereas the west elevation be facing Stonebridge. I think overall, it's meeting the intent. It's kind of hard to make a look great, but it's a pretty admirable effort. So if you have any questions, I'll take them.
Uh, I think we need any, any public comments on this? Do we have anyone? Is the applicant present wanting to speak on this? Public comments? Anyone online for public comments?
Got no hands.
Okay. Shall we start? We'll start with Dr. Brown.
I don't have any questions about this. I mean, I think it looks better than Bojangles. And I can see, the more we do this, the more I see why we now have a pattern book. I think for a garage, it's about as good as it gets.
Yeah.
In full agreement.
Mr. Hall?
Yeah, I was glad to just hear that the south elevation is the.
Yeah. Ms. Kinger? I'm good with it too. Okay, so shall we take a vote?
Motion to pass, agree.
Mr. Hopkins, you have something? Oh, well, well.
Make a motion.
Yeah, I know, that's. You would make.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call.
Dr. Brown.
Yes.
A spender guess.
Yes.
This hurt.
Yes.
Mr. Hall.
Yes.
Ms. Kingery.
Yes. Passes five oh. Great, we're so efficient tonight. All right, we're gonna move into the workshop component of our meeting tonight. And as a little front information on this, the planning commission, we have discussed and found that we have faced uncomfortable situations because Powhatan's access management ruling is different than VDOT's ruling and even how they measure from one intersection to the other is different. So comparing the two is like apples to oranges. And we've had a lot of inconsistencies in the cases that have come before us in our first two years. So we asked Mr. Hopkins to please do an analysis of, so we could understand why Powhatan County's access management is different than Virginia Department of Transportation's. And I will add that Powhatan's is more stringent and we can talk about that. So would you like to make a presentation and then we can ask our questions?
Sure.
That'd be great.
And I'll say we have two VDOT representatives here. Questions, they are here.
Okay.
Um, so in looking at it holistically, I first reached out to VDOT and saw what they had. And they had some internal working documents, what I sent along last time. That kind of started the formulation of what is different and what do they look for when they're evaluating some of our plans? One of the original issues was if a subdivision comes in for VDOT purposes, they're gonna want two connections regardless. You have to hit over fifty lots for us to acquire two. And that kind of dissonance, I don't sure makes too much sense, but it's in there. And certainly causes some amount of conflict when some developers are less than fifty lots and they say, well, I, I only wanna build one entrance and VDOT's preventing me from doing this. Can I get a waiver? Can we do this? And it's kind of back and forth that kind of happens around behind the scenes. It's just kind of generally not great. So I think if, if there were gonna be some changes to the ordinance, this is be one of the things I think would, would make a lot of sense considering also, we do have some private road approvals that come to the board that might be for, for smaller lot developments, you know, sub ten lots. And also for conservation subdivisions, also more likely to have a single entrance and not meet those connectivity requirements. Or something that's been working through on our first conservation subdivision. So, but regardless of those two very specific scenarios, the incongruity here, I don't think really helps us very much.
Go ahead.
The subdivision connectivity part, VDOT really just wants you to make two access points. And if I, if I understand it correctly, they want you to go to one of the other directional property lines and not the same property line. We don't have that much specificity on that, but we do wanna make you try and connect to neighboring properties that already have built out, which I do think is good. So that's one area that's a little bit different, but it's kind of more of a nuance than anything. All right. So as far as intersection spacing, this is really, I think mostly about sixty, but it is countywide, but I think most is focused on sixty. So I will focus on sixty. If you have questions outside of sixty, please feel free to raise them. In the VDOT standards, they really break things out at different speeds than we do, which is kind of one of the main differences. And their distances are shorter. It's my understanding that the reasoning behind their spacing really has to do with stopping distance at those speeds. So it's really all about safety. If you're going on any of these speeds at these certain issues, they're, they're talking about how long is it gonna take you to stop and not cause an accident? When it comes to our regulations, it appears that they were implemented, I think sometime in the mid two thousands. I do not know the logic for why they arrived at these. But they seem to have just been under the assumption that more distance, which is technically correct, is, is going to be safer as that is not a minimum distance. But as to why they came to these specific numbers is, is unclear. So for sixty, really what we deal with the most is six hundred and twenty-five feet in between access points. For VDOT, it's only four ninety-five. When you factor in the, the measuring distance, it might be an extra fifty feet. We'll come to that in a minute. So generally speaking, that kind of pushes everything out and somewhat induces waivers. People are trying to say, oh, well, I need to build this year. I'd like a waiver. That was originally part of a administrative sign off, but then got pushed up into board approval. So that's now at that stage. It's my understanding that most of those have been approved when they get there. So there is something that probably needs to get fixed in that process. That if we have these increased standards, and these are largely either been approved administratively beforehand or approved at the board level to shorten them, then maybe there needs to be some kind of holistic look at, you know, try to change that mechanism so that it's more equitable for everybody and also meets some sort of a very specific standard. Here's a chart I made. It's kind of overlays the two of them. VDOT's numbers are in red. Again, I did my best to kind of combine the speeds as their speeds are different than our speeds. Again, you can see some of the logic in what they did to make our regulations where some numbers are clearly just doubles of others. For example, you know, between crossover, say at forty-five or more. It's just simply double the, the VDOT required distance. The rest of them all, again, are just increases. It seems like we just took everything that, that VDOT had and just kind of made it as little bit more and then strict as possible. So if there was some sort of a kind of a difference between, say, thirty-five miles an hour and forty-five, we would just say, let's go to the, the next one up to make a more distance. So really, it all is about just trying to create more distance between access points. For the driveline spacing, you can see I tried to make a little line where, where VDOT measures two and then we measured to really where that blue line is. And that is effectively pushing it out on average about fifty feet. So when you see that six hundred and twenty-five number, it's really probably six seventy-five instead of, you know, just four ninety-five to six twenty-five. We make every single CUP rezoning case come through a traffic impact statement. VDOT only requires it a thousand peak trips when that gets triggered. I think this is probably an issue where VDOT certainly insinuated that they really appreciate all the extra additional information that gets provided to them on every case, and they find that very helpful. I think for our purposes, it is very helpful in, in vetting cases here and at the board level. But I think there's, for smaller applicants, it's probably a bit challenging to go through this. I think Stroud was one of the last ones that, that we had. Yeah, where it's, it's a bit onerous and expensive for, for smaller applicants or applications to, to go through it. On auxiliary lane warrants, VDOT evaluates this based on their peak hour turns and, and the traffic volume. For us, specifically for sixty, we just make people put them in for the most part. There's just the requirement is to just put in them for, it's, that's the direct quote out of our ordinance is to, is to put in left or right turn lanes. Again, very similar to kind of the traffic impact statement. If you were a smaller use, the wedding venue that was out west on sixty comes to mind.
Yeah, that's.
That didn't have to apply to this.
Right. And so for most of the developments on sixty, you're probably going to have to put in a turn lane. But there are some times where it, it doesn't make as much sense. And it could be overly onerous. I think the kind of net effect of that is that it's gonna be people with deeper pockets that are able to pull off developing on sixty, basically. So perhaps your larger developers, your, your chains of the world are definitely at an advantage of being able to go through these processes to make these a reality. It may be a smaller person who, a small developer who comes in and says, you know, I'd have to build a turn lane regardless of whether it was us imposing this or VDOT's regulations. And they might say, no, I'm not gonna do it anyways, but this is ultimately a reality of what's going on in sixty. I will say that overall, there's just always going to be a push on sixty between it being needed to be a highway and needed to be a business road. It's, it's in this transitionary period of, you know, what, what we want to be. There's a lot of people, if you come in at rush hour, trying to queue up to get in or out of Powhatan or trying to commute in it, needed out of the highway. And there's a lot of pressure, the people who wanna develop it. And this is kind of a, a juncture in which, you know, these were clearly designed to try and keep it the highway commuting. If we wanna keep going down that road, we can certainly keep going down that road if there's an appetite to change it to do decreased spacing. That also is, is a reality. Some hybrid of these also is a possibility. It's really up to the board, but those are the issues or problems that I identified.
Okay, to begin the discussion, one thing that I know Dr. Brown and I discussed, we are comparing apples to oranges because VDOT measures distance from one point to another point. We measure from one point to another point. I think first thing we need to do is we need to measure, we're not gonna get VDOT to change the measure, the way we measure. We're gonna need to change the measure the way VDOT measures. Thoughts, comments on that?
I think that's step one.
Yeah.
I mean, the analysis makes no sense when you have figures that are not measured the same way. I mean, it is apples to oranges and maybe a couple grapes thrown in.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, when you're measuring like, yeah, if you look in the packet, it, yes. Okay.
What, well, so what, what, what I'd like to see happen is that we first adopt one system of measurement. And my suggestion would be it be VDOTs.
I'm definitely against that. I'm definitely against that.
We accept, I'm not saying we accept.
So the only thing I have a question about related to that is how often does it really come that the way we're measuring comes down to whether it passes or not, right? I mean, I get we're measuring it differently. It's still a number we're getting to. How does that really affect our, our measurement is more stringent? So we're gonna go by our measurement. Why would we be going by VDOT's measurement other than if it can, if it? Ours is more stringent, so aren't we always gonna go by ours?
There've been cases where we've gone by VDOTs.
I mean, help me understand.
It's, it's. Say if our measurement is six twenty-five, is that, that's what you're looking.
And if you meet the six twenty-five.
And you're comparing it to VDOTs.
Four fifty.
Four fifty, you're thinking that's the difference. The difference reality, that in reality is another fifty feet or seventy-five feet to our number.
And that was intentional, I think.
Well, I don't think so. I think, well, it might have been.
May have been.
Well, if that was the case, why didn't they go, okay, to make it, I'm a very linear person. And to me, it makes more sense to go centerline to centerline. And if you wanted it to be six seventy-five, say six seventy-five, don't go, well, we're gonna measure a different point just to get a even additional spacing between.
That's what I'm, I, that's what I'm saying. I just think if we measure the same way.
That then address what you want that distance to be.
Right. Well, then if you're gonna do that, I think we have to address what the distance is gonna be because I think the measurement was intentional along with the size of the, the.
But we don't have any information that it was.
We don't.
I mean, it's all.
That's. And that's my concern, that when applicants come into Powhatan, that it's very confusing on access management. And so if we are very clear and there's a clear chart, but the first step to understanding this and being able to explain it to people is that we measure the way VDOT measures. And then we can, we can increase the, you know, that's great, but I just think that makes it to me. So.
Can I ask Brett a question since she's been here a while?
Come on.
Do you feel like people, applicants are confused by this or because of our more stringent requirements, do we just jump to our requirements and how we measure it? How confusing do you feel like this is?
I, I think right now, we're fortunate that we have some stability in VDOT staff and so on, county side staff, but people know what it is. And when I came in though, county staff had told me one thing, VDOT staff had told me another, there was not, you know, staff changes, it can get confusing. So I'd say right now, I think we know what it is. We have a few generally engineers in the community that do a lot of work here that they know it. But, you know, a few people leave that know the process, you get a different engineer coming in and then it gets very confusing again, which is which. So is there a problem right now today? I would say not so much, but there has been historically, there's been much confusion about this between us and VDOT, who's measuring what.
Can you speak at all to why we decided to measure differently?
It was before I was here and I haven't, we'd have to look and see if there's any record from those meetings about when I know much of the kind of two thousand fourteen timeframe. When a lot of that was done, it was done by consultant. They brought in off the shelf, frankly, ordinance from another locality they had done and just kind of put our name on it. Can't say that's what happened, but also wouldn't be surprised, but we'd have to do a little more research and see if we can find staff reports, meeting videos, something from back.
Would it be appropriate to ask the board of supervisors to make the change in this that we measured this? We're not at this point asking to change any numbers or anything, but just ask that we measure the same way VDOT measures?
I I would see value in that. So again, I started by saying there's not a problem currently, but I think there could very easily be get ourselves back into confusion and mix up again. So I think aligning that with VDOT, I think, would make a lot of sense. Again, not giving into what the ultimate number is, but just measuring the same way, I think, makes sense.
Can I ask the VDOT people a question? So VDOT experts. Um, so the Dutch, the way VDOT chooses to measure, what's the rationale behind? Because VDOT measures this way all over the state. And so is there a reason why it's measured this way? So we can understand that. Thank you for being here tonight.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. My name is Adam Wilkerson. I'm the area land use engineer for the VDOT Chesterfield residency. We support Powhatan County. I don't have a a set answer for you, but with my experience with access management, if you could pull, can you pull up the VDOT table, please? The basis for the numbers in our table, if you look at the rightmost column where it says type four partial access, that those distances are based on stopping site distance. And so that's from the perception of a driver on that road traveling the legal speed limit. What time or distance they need to recognize that they need to stop, and then they can actually stop their vehicle.
Okay.
For the type three, which is the next column over, those spaces are based on intersection site distance. So that's from the perception of a driver stopped on the side of the road at an entrance that is looking to enter whether they're turning right or left. So they need to find a a gap in the traffic and safely make that maneuver. The next two columns, types one and types two for signalized intersections and four way intersections was something that our traffic engineering staff came up with based on corridor length. So that's looking at a linear multiple mile highway and how we want to plan for where these crossovers are, where these signals are. So the question of why do we measure from the center, I think, from either an intersection stop stopping site distance point, thinking of someone in the center or near the center of that entrance, looking, that's a a standard practice that we would have. And as far as a driver proceeding the entrance, I think the center is a logical place where you're expecting vehicles to be entering and exiting. So like I said, I don't have any.
So that's just consistent throughout all VDOT's measuring is to measure from the center?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And and I'm assuming that at one point in my life, I had to study auto accidents.
Remember that.
And there's all, there's a lot of research on how much space it takes to stop based on speed. So there is research that backs that up that that's safe and appropriate. Okay. I I don't know that we have that for us, but that's my my biggest issue is we're measuring different ways. I think that's confusing to anybody coming to apply. And it seems capricious, which I don't think is what we want.
I just don't think that you can visit the changing how we measure without considering changing the distance when it incorporates that fifty feet. We're saying.
I'm not, I I what I'm thinking is there's a two step process. First step is we look at how we measure and we all measure the same way, which is what you would do in any analysis. Then we come back. Then we come back. And we say, okay, let's look at the distances now as we now measure the same way. What do they end up being? And
What needs to be changed?
What needs to be changed? And maybe we take some examples throughout the county and take a look at this. I I dare say that the county has never had the resources to do a analysis on stopping distances. Would you agree with that?
I would agree with that, but I also think that this was very intentional to minimize the amount of ins and outs on sixty to keep the quality of life in Powhatan within certain boundaries.
But it's not applied.
And I wouldn't, I would say that if we're going to address this, let's address it maybe in multiple meetings, but address it as a whole before we send piecemeal to the board to consider with everything they have to do. I think we should consider all aspects and maybe maybe one meeting, we agree to that, but I think we should do it as a whole and not piecemeal it to the board.
Can I ask VDOT one other question? Are there any other localities that measure differently than VDOT's measurement? Do you know? And hi, good to see you.
Hi, Rebecca Worley. I'm the resident engineer for the Chesterfield residency. Yes, our district land use director did check with other localities statewide, and he had not heard back yet from Northern Virginia District. I suspect that they may have some changes in access management that differ from VDOTs. But he did discover that Goochlin County does have their own access management standards that do differ. They don't quite match up with what Powhatan has, but they do have their own intersection spacing and auxiliary lane.
How about in the measurement technique from, you know?
I I can't speak to that specifically. Yeah.
And I'm fine with us having more stringent access management, but I'm just questioning, would it be less confusing if we measured this, you know, if people came in the county go, okay, it's VDOT standards plus two fifty or you know what I'm saying?
And I'm fine with that. I just think we ought to have the conversation as a whole. And just even if we have to do it over several meetings.
Right, and then present it.
The proposal as a whole and present it. I don't want to just go, we're going to change the way we measure, done. And then we might have another conversation. And if you, I I think we need to think through this. We're going to think through it because I think the other pieces that the 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 two accesses, you know, that you brought up. You know, when we only required over fifty, I mean, aren't, don't we default to the VDOT standard then? Because they're not going to be able to do it via VDOT. So don't we default to that? So there's other things that we need to consider.
I agree. I think I agree because I know my neighborhood and Bell Bridge and Bell Crest, that is a violation. There are over fifty houses in each neighborhood, and there's one road in and one road out. And, you know, that our, my son, who's a Chesterfield firefighter paramedic, commented, Mom, this would not happen in Chesterfield. This is not safe. If the entrance is blocked for some reason, we can't get to the houses. So I'm, I I get that, Jane. I just, do we have someone that can analyze for us by taking how we our numbers for access management and changing how we measure, what impact does that have?
And I get that, but right now, I think with the shortage on the staff, I have to question, is this the most important thing we need to do or or should we start looking at the comprehensive plan and the things that we need to do to put the zoning code in line with that? Where does this stand in the list of priorities?
That's a good point.
And where does it stand with the resource, the very limited resources we have available right now? Because right now I heard Brett say it's really not confusing. This made this, this presentation made this make a lot more sense for me, and the comments in here were great. I want to thank you for putting this together because I got a lot from just reading this condensed version of of the, you know, the regulations and things that, yeah. But I think we got to back up and we got to look at, is this the right time to look at this? Is this the priority we need to do? And if we do it, how we do it and not piecemealing it? That that's where I'm, I'm not against changing how we measure as long as we visit the measurement with it. So I'm just that I bring I bring that up.
Something we brought up or did the
We brought it.
Request to the board. Because it's, we had had issues with.
I know.
I just, you know, like, let me just point out, like, the wedding venue on sixty.
I remember.
We didn't make, and there's a big church. What's the name of the church?
Evergreen.
Evergreen. That doesn't have, no, no, no.
That we did make them put it in.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the big existing church down near the wedding.
TCC.
Passion Church. They don't have a turn lane. So I mean, that's what I'm saying. I just, I think it's important as a planning commission, and I would say to the board of supervisors, I would like to see an access management policy, and it can be as strict as you want it to be, but it's easily applied, interpreted. There's no questions about it. You know, you know what I'm saying, Jane? And that's why, to me, just the scientist in me, that measuring like VDOT measures, that's the first step. So I can say, yeah, Powhatan consistently is two hundred feet more over braking distance for this reason.
We need staff to get us a current comprehensive plan because what became clear tonight is I was looking at a comprehensive plan that had no gray on sixty. So I would like to get or know where I can get because I looked up the twenty twenty one updated plan on our site. And that piece of property was not, and it said twenty twenty one update draft was not gray. So before, I would like to get a comprehensive plan that
And can I say one thing? I got two issues. I know. Well, let me just a little footnote on the the zoning ordinances. And I spoke with members of the board of supervisor, they said that they were going and Brett, maybe you can speak to this. I know we kind of jumped off, but just to clear this up, that we would not be doing the update to the zoning and subdivision ordinances. And they were going to hire an outside entity. Is that correct, Brett, to make those changes? Because it is such a monumental task. Are you?
I don't think a decision's been made, but it's been discussed. We certainly talked about possibly getting some outside resources like a consultant for traffic component, but that's much more engineering heavy things. We don't have a transportation engineer or even a a transportation dedicated planner on staff. So I think that definitely as far as bringing in outside resources to help with updating the zoning ordinance and stuff, I I it's been talked about. I don't think it's been decided one way or another.
So all right. Yes, Dr. Brown.
Y'all are scrambling my head. So what I'd like to propose, I think Jane makes a good point about the comprehensive plan. And a good point, why don't we send a package? So maybe we can do this in steps. So maybe the first thing is, do we agree or not agree that we should all use the same way to measure? It's not the same distances, the same way.
Just to measure. Measure like VDOT measures.
And then this analysis is then redone.
To reflect that.
Reflect what does that mean in terms of if everybody measures the same way? So what would these distances really be?
For Powhatan.
For Powhatan. And maybe you do some examples, and the examples would be, say, a couple businesses on sixty. And then within a large subdivision such as
Bell Bridge, Bell Crest.
In a smaller subdivision. Somewhere kind of west, so we're not always picking on the first district.
I know. Everything's in the first district. Yay.
Do you want, is there, do you have a subdivision issue?
We like to say no to those in my division.
Dead on, Jane. I'm trading with you. You can do one for a while.
The fifth is no subdivisions. But I think, what about within the village? Didn't they have to meet some standards for there?
The true value.
The true, yeah, that pro, true value.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they did meet.
That they went with VDOT because of the big trucks, I recall.
But because they asked for a waiver. And they received it. And that's my issues that with our distances is that almost I bet what, six cases this past year have asked for waivers and they've all been granted. So I mean, so why are we putting numbers that are twice as much as VDOT, but yet we're not enforcing them?
And that's what, that's where I'm coming from. I'm trying to, I, being the science person I am, I would like to have an access management for Powhatan County. Here it is. This is what it is, and this is what you got to live with. And not be like, you know.
We're the ones that grant the waivers. Let's not all forget. We we say they can have them, and then the board does the final. So we're the ones saying yes.
I know.
And there are several that I think I may have said no to.
You're right.
So
I'm just reflecting back.
I don't want to reduce that and give up that ability for those waivers because I think as we move forward, these spacing requirements are going to be critical to how we look in Powhatan so that we don't look like Chesterfield. We don't look like Hull Street, and we definitely don't look like Broad Street.
I understand your fear. It's coming through loud and clear.
I'm speaking for the people who are in my district, so.
I understand, I understand. Yeah, I understand your fear, and I think we can address that. And so if we would do this in two steps, would you feel comfortable with that? So that we first look, let's all measure the same way. And then let's see, what is the impact of that and get some hardcore examples? And then decide, you know, is this realistic or should we look somewhere else? What I would like to see someone go through the minutes from the mid two thousands, you know, ten fifteen years ago and see, why was this done? Was there a study? What, you know?
Where did it come from? Is this going to take you? And how much time do you really?
I don't think it has to be done in the next month.
Right. So I think it's something we can look at. I I'm not against that at all. And definitely.
I just think it would be good to be consistent, have a consistent access management policy and not be handing out waivers here and there because then it almost looks like a popularity contest. And that's not the way government should run. And that's why I feel like we need to make sure that we're consistent, however stringent we want it to be, and that this is what we live by. And I think then that'll be reflective in the type of development that's going to happen. And I think, you know, because this is always the big problem in any project. It's, it is. So I just feel like it takes that off that if you have.
Rose are the biggest problem.
I, well, we, that is our problem. But if we have a consistent access management that we are not granting all these waivers, because sometimes I feel like you said, I feel like, well, they got it with their church, they got it or this people. It's just not, it just doesn't give the right image of Powhatan County. It might, that's just me. So, well, why don't we do this? You're really shorthanded horrendously, getting the comp plan updated and figuring out what we're going to do about getting the the zoning and subdivision ordinances. Let's, let's just put this off a couple months. When we get some new people hired in, you know, they, what what do you guys think of that, that we can?
Let me, how long would it take you to do the analysis that I outlined?
For the examples.
That you gave us.
Measurements.
Measurements.
And then going back through the, I think you also asked for him to go back through the.
See if you could find some what the
It would take some amount of time, but my a lot of applications to hit my desk last week.
Yeah, you need, you need some time.
Sometimes.
Yeah. Should we say like ninety days? So
Fine.
Ninety days. Does that seem fair? Ninety days?
Wouldn't take me that long, but literally like it just a bunch of things.
You're the planning department, and so I know you've got a lot on your desk.
But I do think a lot of the points that were touched on are important because one of the big things I think for me is the equity point you keep touching on it is that the waiver process, that seems to just not not be working, I would say, on some level. The measuring thing, I think, is something I would prefer, like me personally, and I do not care if it's more work, that we have a holistic item. I do not want to do this piecemeal.
Okay, that's great.
Be identified what you would like to change. We take one big item through and we change it as much as we possibly can.
That's great. But I think first we got to be able to look and compare apples to apples and measure the intersections the same way.
Or I would say, again, and Adam could could speak to this.
Yeah, I was just going to say, VDOT, if you guys have any thoughts that could guide us in trying to analyze our situation, we would really appreciate it.
The distance, though the measuring is crazy, so it was like an average of fifty additional feet. So every single thing in there, the measuring is just adding fifty feet to. So if we took that out, it is exactly the same chart I would give you right now. You just have to know that that's plus fifty essentially for all of those.
You shouldn't have to know.
I I I agree with you.
We measure the same way. We up everything fifty and we're back to where we started, and we're very clear.
But nobody's good.
But then we start giving out waivers.
Development on sixty where you want development on sixty, that's the issue also.
Well, I think you're handicapping it. You're minimizing the amount of it that can you enter with a new driveway without using shared access points.
If you are a owner of some If you are a owner of some property and it's only a thousand feet wide, you could be handicapper and might not even, if people on each side of you have put in a road, you might not be able to put your road in for your development.
I I agree with Bobby on this. I think, and I appreciate Frank's thoughts because this waiver system is, um, capricious. But let's just start first with the single way to get a number. I mean, I remember when the wedding venue gentleman, Mr. Smith was here and he went through all the regs in V dot and I'm like, well, this one could just interest.
To the speed limit and that.
Be honest, makes no sense. So if we could just start with the measurement and then if you could do an updated analysis, if you want me to write this all out for you, I'd be happy to. And then in 60 days, you don't have to say, what the hell?
Ninety, sixty.
It's 90 days.
And do we want to look at what Goochlin is doing? Just for, to come, just curiosity, because they want to maintain their rural character. And they have issues along route two fifty, Broad Street. I mean, that's just.
Fine with me.
Just. Yeah. I mean, V dot folks, do you have any guidance to us?
That up without asking Frank to do that?
Yeah. I mean, we can look that up.
Can we not look that up if we, if, if we individuals want to know that? Can we look that up? Let's, let's take some burden off of Frank.
Oh, I agree totally. That's what I wanted to say to Frank. I hope they're going to hire help for rewriting the subdivision and the zoning ordinances. Cause.
If we go to talk about this, you can bring your paper about what Goochlin does and then add it to your input. So.
That's, that's good. Okay. So let's, we'll push this back and we'll make our focus on getting the comp plan out for the public. I know. Yeah. Because Jane and I both had the same situation. We looked it up. We're going like, what?
And I'm like, well, I.
And then I see the triangle here today and I'm like, what? I didn't see that online. So that.
And it's deceptive because it does say twenty twenty-one update.
It does.
That's what is deceptive about that. And it makes me wonder where in the twenty twenty-one update process did we decide to change that piece of property and why? And maybe that wasn't as transparent as it should have been.
Well, to be honest, I watched a lot of the supervisors workshops on the comp plan. And then I just got glassy eyed and turned it off. Don't, don't tell anybody, but that's.
I think you just told the county.
I know I did. I'm just being honest. All right. Well, so we know where we are.
Yeah, we're going to delay this 90 days.
Yes. Cause Frank has got a lot of cases and a lot with the comp plan. We need the comp plan.
Let me bring up something else with the comp plan. All right. If you're going to get this out, we had asked for two weeks to look at it. So if you got this out by the end of this week, we'd have two weeks before we would be back in this meeting.
Yeah.
Everybody raise their hand if they're going to spend Christmas holidays looking at this instead of with their families. Oh, well, that would be none of us. I would like to suggest that we don't address the comp plan until February.
I wanted to, I only, I don't want to address the comp plan. I just want an updated version when I'm trying to make decision on.
I think it's as simple as uploading the right document. I'm, I'm surprised that it's.
Okay.
Okay. Well, then that's good. It's just, and then too, when the public goes to look, I hate for them to go, what is with these people? You know? Okay. Well, then if it's just as simple as getting it up on the website, that would be really great. Okay. All right. Well, we also tonight, this rezoning, the general commercial lots, the commerce center. My understanding, and I didn't mean to make it sound confusing. This is for already zoned with tenants situation. These are built, right? These are not. So we're not going to go try to change undeveloped land.
Correct.
Okay.
So it's just kind of a primer, hopefully for next month is to, we're, we're seeking this rezoning. The issue is that a lot of the uses are stripped out of general commercial a couple of years ago. And we found that that's created a number of non-conforming situations. So there just needs to be a solution for existing business owners to have a full array of normal uses for, for commercial properties. And so the idea is to.
Well, it's when they, they say their tenant moves out and they want to re-lease it to someone else. Then you can't grandfather that because it's a new business coming in. Is that correct, Frank?
Can, um, but if something goes out and is vacant for two years, you would lose that use. So if you have like a single tenant parcel and you have, let's say a restaurant. And then you, the restaurant goes out and you lease it to, you know, some retail front for two years. Well, and you want to go back to restaurant. Well, that's no longer in general commercial. So people who are finding this out or, you know, landlords and they're trying to fill their spots for, you know, just run things out normally and they can't. So their, their rights are, are vested for a certain period of time, but not indefinitely.
So it's making it difficult for people that have tenants in their property.
To keep, to put in a new tenant.
That's doing a similar business.
Correct. And so we are trying to proactively fix this by going after every single general commercial lot that has an existing business or structure really, um, and making and making sure that they're CC since general commercial is a disfavored zoning.
Right. Cause it's commerce center now. Correct? All right. Do we know how many, do you have any clue how many properties that involves?
I have an Excel. It's somewhere in the, I want to say it's like 60 to 70 range.
Okay. There was something in here about numbers.
Did I miss that?
Thought there was numbers in here. Highlighted. Yeah. Approximately it's on page 55, approximately 60 properties that have the existing. It was on page 55.
Our packet's not numbered. So.
Yeah, we have our packet numbered in blue. So I remember these things and can find them quick.
I, I underline in star. Did I miss that?
Becomes difficult.
Very last page.
Oh, three and three. Okay. I missed that.
Staff about middle way of the top paragraph.
Sixty properties.
Okay. There you go. My, my apologies that I missed that. Okay. All right. Now, um, what is the process that has to be to do that? Is that a big?
It's already been initiated. We're just trying to get just a quick mention of it.
Do you notify the property owners that this has been done being do, be, I, I can talk tonight.
Formal advertising.
You're not in English, do you?
I'm not. I'm physics and chemistry. Yeah. Okay. As, is there any problem that anyone would be not happy with this occurring?
I don't know if I want to comment on that. I wouldn't think so. I think it's pretty straightforward.
Okay.
Is it going to cost them more money in taxes or anything?
That's what I was wondering.
Is that your?
Not my purview, but it should help them rent their properties.
Business licensing or taxes or anything?
The issue is keeping the, keeping.
The property with a tenant.
Yeah, property with a tenant.
Yeah.
To the extent that we can make that easier, I think that is a world worthwhile goal.
Right.
Yeah. We don't want a bunch of empty biz, buildings that get run down. That looks terrible. Yeah. All right. Does anyone else have anything to address this evening? Other than Merry Christmas, Happy New Year? Well, being said, I will adjourn the meeting. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, January 4th, 2022. Boy, time flies. And, uh, is it the January meeting that we elect the new chair or is it the February meeting?
I can check the bylaws.
Will you check the, yeah, cause I could, do you know Brett? I think it's, okay. All right. So I got to do it one more month. Okay, guys. All right. Thank you for coming. Thank you for holding everything together.
No worries.